Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Work Session for Wednesday, November 4, 2020. The topic today is Thurston Climate Action Team, the CPACER program. This is an informational bulletin scheduled for an hour. I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board. I also have Commissioner, Vice Chair Commissioner Ty Mensah, County Manager Romero Chavez. I don't know if the Clerk of the Board, Amy Davis, is in or not. But we also have Josh Cummings, the Director of CPED. And we have other guests. I'll get to them in a minute. I want to give you the phone number to call in if you wish to listen. And that's 360-252-9020. And your PIN number is 1234. Romero, what else do you have? Anybody else I'm missing?
No, I think Commissioner Gary Edwards has joined us by phone. I think you introduced him already, right?
I have not, no. I didn't know he was in the building or joining us.
Yeah, he's joined us via phone. And before the members of the Thurston Climate Action Team, let me provide you some background related to this briefing. And again, this is an informational briefing. No auctions are requested by the Commissioners at this point. And the CPACER was a piece of legislation that they passed which allows the county to set up a program for individuals who like to take advantage of green strategies through a third-party lender. And as a result, the payment of the loans will be part of the property taxes, as I understand it. There's a brand-new program, as stated, the Department of Commerce. Early in the year, was assigned a certain amount of money to help local jurisdictions, particularly counties, to get this program off the ground. So since leading to the pandemic, Governor Inslee struck out that grant program from the Department of Commerce. And then we started having this conversation as to how a potential ordinance, how this program could be implemented in Thurston County. And that's how this briefing really is going to provide hopefully a wider, broader perspective to the Board as to what this program could do, what the benefits are. And then I will engage the Board on future conversations where there is an interest to establish this program formally for the citizens of the county.
All right.
That's the background that I have for you.
Thank you. So who's going to take it away? We've got Tom Crawford and Chris Van Allen, Greg Quinton, and we'll also see Brett Burts, of course, the famous Brett Burts. So are we starting with you then, Josh?
Yeah, Jenica Machado was supposed to be here, but Josh is the next in king.
Okay.
Well, I think that the County Manager set it up nicely. And you know Brett and I, as part of the CPED group, the permanent planning portion of it, are here to listen, to see how we might just in the future, if the Board decides to take next steps. We're also going to be translators back to Jenica when she returns as their conduit. So we're here to listen at this point, pretty much.
All right. So take it away. Tom?
Me, I believe.
Okay, Chris, okay.
Yeah. So I'm going to share my screen.
When you do that, when you start to introduce yourself, please, for the record.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Chris.
Can everyone see my screen at this point?
Yeah.
Except for Commissioner Edwards. Well, thank you Chair Hutchings and Commissioners for the opportunity to present this information to you today. I appreciate your interest in the Thurston Climate Action Team. And I just wanted to say that, you know, the way you all have worked together with the Steering Committee and taking advantage of aspects, you know, taking some action early on some of the aspects of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan is very admirable, and I appreciate that. Also applaud your interest in the CPACER program and your willingness to move forward on it. If you can, if we do decide to move forward quickly on it, you'll be in a race with Watcom County to be the first county in Washington to adopt the CPACER program. So a little bit of healthy competition there. Talk to your counterparts up in Watcom County and see if we can beat them to the punch. Let's see here. The next slide is... So we're going to have three presenters today to lay out what the CPACER program is. I'll start it off with a little bit of CPACER 101, what it is, how it works, and go from there. My name is Chris Van Allen. I'm with the Northwest Eco Building Guild, if I didn't say that before. Then we're really fortunate today to have Gregory Quinton, who has a PhD in climate science from the University of Washington. He lives here in Thurston County, and he's currently working for Stanford University doing climate research. He's going to cover the benefits of CPACER and how it helps building owners invest in energy efficiency and help us meet our climate goals at the same time. Then, of course, you all know Tom Crawford. He's the President of the Thurston Climate Mitig- Thurston Climate Action Team. And Tom is going to be talking about Thurston County's role in adopting the CPACER program. As the County Manager mentioned, the legislation specifies that the county would be the level at which the program gets implemented. So let me start it off. Before I do, actually, I want to acknowledge another partner that has really helped to provide a lot of the information for today's presentation. Both my organization, the Northwest Eco Building Guild, and Thurston Climate Action Team are members of a statewide alliance called Shift Zero. It's a zero-carbon building alliance, and they represent 30, more than 35 green building, energy efficiency, affordable housing, and climate action organizations, businesses, and certification programs. And they, together, we all advocate for equitable policies to scale up energy efficiency for everyone in Washington. Shift Zero is the organization that did the research and advocated for the bill to bring CPACER to Washington. And now they're offering model documents and guidance to help the counties get it set up. So let's just start at the beginning. What is CPACER? Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy and Resilience Financing. It creates, CPACER creates a mechanism for building owners to finance energy efficiency and resiliency projects for both existing buildings and new buildings. By making a building more energy efficient, it increases the value of the building. But in a lot of cases, that may be difficult or hard for developers to pay for, for the upfront cost of making a building more energy efficient. CPACER makes it possible for them to do this by providing low-interest rate loans and longer-term financing. A CPACER loan places an assessment, otherwise known as a lien, on the property and at the same time finances improvements in buildings that are in the public interest. Other states have adopted CPACER legislation, or CPACE legislation, but they generally have only passed a law, passed bills that allow for financing of clean energy improvements. So often you'll see CPACER referred to as CPACE or just PACE without the R. But in Washington, seismic improvements, fire suppression, flood control, and other resiliency measures are very important to us. So that's why the R was included in our bill. Those various safety improvements represent resiliency in the R in the name of our bill. So state and local governments began adopting PACE in the early 2000s. And since then, now we have 25 different states have CPACE laws on the books, and over 2,500 properties have been improved with over a billion dollars invested in those projects. Just a little bit of background on the legislation. There's been a long-time interest in CPACE for Washington because we saw it being adopted in so many other states. California was one of the first states to adopt it. And as you know, Washington often follows some of the policy innovations done in California. Shift Zero started the task force and did the legal research to identify a successful path for the legislation. And then in just this last year, it was introduced. And HB 2405 finally passed with the leadership of our representative Beth Doleo and others mentioned here on the slide. It passed with overwhelming bipartisan support with a vote of 93 to 4 in the Senate. There was a, you know, this broad base of support included building owners, property managers, emergency managers, cities, and organized labor, to name a few. They all saw that this bill had many benefits by improving energy efficiency and more clean energy, safer buildings, not to mention all the jobs and economic development opportunities that come with it. Now, I also want to note that the Thurston County Treasurer Jeff Gadman worked with the Legislature to address some concerns during the development of the bill. Those concerns were addressed, and the bill was altered. And then our Treasurer signed in as neutral on the bill. So, you know, so he'll be, you can expect that he'll be in communication with the Commissioners about this as this legislation, or as this project goes forward. So what can CPACER be used for? Building owners can use CPACER to finance qualifying improvements on most different types of large buildings. That includes office, multifamily, industrial, hospitals, retail, hotels, and agricultural buildings. CPACER specifically does not allow financing these kind of improvements in single-family homes, duplexes, or fourplexes. Some states have a residential CPACE, residential pace, but Washington, we found, felt that it would be more likely to pass with just the commercial side. And of course, it was passed with a lot of support. And so the CPACE, CPACER can be used to finance improvements in small multifamily buildings with five units or more. And so it does provide quite a bit of opportunity for us to address many of the different types of buildings in our community. So now the question is, what can CPACER be used to finance? Again, this is called Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy and Resilience Financing, allows financing for energy efficiency improvement such as lighting upgrades, new windows, insulation, and clean energy measures such as solar panels or electric vehicle charging. And then the resilient, on the resiliency side, you know, it will also fund things like fire suppression, seismic upgrades, etc. Next slide. So I want to take this a little bit deeper now. Look at, you know, talk about, a little bit deeper about how this program would work. Let me see, I've lost my track of my slide notes here. Here we go. So this is a property-based debt financing tool. It's not a property tax assessment in the sense that the, that the, that the county would be responsible for collecting the payments. We'll get more into that later. But it is an assessment such, like a tax assessment, but in this case, it's an assessment placed on the property like other commonly-used tools to make improvements in the public interest, such as sewer upgrades or water business improvement districts, those kinds of things. Other examples of property assessments. But it allows the owner to finance over a longer period, which increases the internal rate of return on the building. The improvements are made to the property, and then the payment obligation for those improvements stays with the property even after it's sold. The debt doesn't appear on the owner's balance sheet, so it doesn't encumber their credit capacity. And so it really becomes a pretty valuable proposition for property owners, but also for the public. For property owners, it increases their bottom line by lowering energy costs. And it also allows them to finance part of their project. It also, so that means it can be cash flow, cash flow positive from day one with no money out of pocket. And from therefore, there were, therefore, you've got lower utility costs and smaller payments spread over a very long-term period. The public benefits from safer buildings and reduced greenhouse gas emissions. And so overall, this is very low risk for consumers and for the county. It offers low rates and very secure transactions. Over the history of CPACE nationwide, there's, there have been no examples of foreclosures with over 2,500 properties financed. So in summary, it really makes a good opportunity, a good way for government to take action that is in the public interest, but also benefits the business and residents. Next slide. A sec here, sorry about that. There you go. So just a quick overview of how it works for the property owner. You know, the property being retrofitted or built needs to identify the needed improvements. So there may be an energy audit that a professional comes in and identifies the practical improvements that can be made. Those are reviewed by a qualified professional to verify that those improvements meet the criteria and fit the guidelines for CPACER. That might be an energy auditor or a civil engineer, if it's a seismic upgrade. Then the owner and the capital provider, local financing institution, get together. They agree on the terms of the financing, the interest rates, etc. And then the owner receives, lenders consent from any other mortgage or obligation holders so that they need to agree that assessment can be placed on the property. The lender applies to, then applies to the county, and if approved, the county records the assessment. The lender then provides the financing to the builder, and the improvements get done. Ultimately, repayment is collected by the capital provider and not by the county. So with that, that kind of concludes the CPACE 101, CPACER 101. And I'm going to turn it over to Gregory Quinton. He's going to tell us a little bit about the benefits of this program.
Morning, everybody. My name's Gregory Quinton, and I'm particularly interested in CPACER with some of the climate consequences of it. But I'm here to talk about a brief overview of kind of benefits to Thurston County and property owners. So just to lay it out, these investments will create more local jobs. For climate, these investments will also reduce our energy use and carbon emissions, create healthier buildings, and creates our resilience to disasters. And then also have this direct value for the property owner with these improvements. Next slide. On the topic of jobs, CPACER will bring in new investments that are particularly high-return in jobs. You see that the investments in renewable energy and energy efficiency provide three times the number of local jobs that investments in fossil fuels do. And so this is a, this is a benefit to Thurston County as a whole with a stronger economy. In terms of climate mitigation, sorry, next slide's good. Yep. In terms of climate goals, Thurston County Climate Mitigation Plan has the goal of reducing CO2 emissions 85% below 2015 levels by 2050. And so CPACER is a way to fund these long-term investments while saving money and reducing our energy use, which is still currently has a mix of fossil fuels on it, as well as do clean energy upgrades to increase our fossil fuel-free energy production. And this leads to savings for commercial customers in both electrical, electrical energy and in natural gas costs. So beyond just reducing our CO2 emissions causing climate change, we can also create a more resilient community to climate change. And so we've talked about how CPACER can be applied both to resilience and this clean energy and energy efficiency and distributes the costs over a long-term, long, long-time span for the financing, which matches better with the long-term risks of climate change. And so a couple of high points, energy retrofits protect against weather extremes and climate that are at risk in the future with climate change. As we've experienced this summer, wildfire smoke is becoming more of an issue. These tighter building envelopes, mechanical ventilation, help create healthier buildings in those cases. And then renewable energy installed on buildings can protect against stress on the electrical grid, an aging grid, and also under pressure from higher temperatures in the future. And then CPACER allows for direct investment in resilience. Not all of these are directly related to climate change in this case, but these include flood protection, heavy rains and sea level rise. As you can see downtown with the new views on Fifth Building, they've already installed a relatively high curb to protect against flood, protect against flood and heavy rains. This would be nice to be able to do this in a retrofit on other buildings that are at risk. Then also seismic improvements protect against earthquakes and retrofits to prevent fires are part of the benefit. Next slide. And so these are, these are investments that also, that create resilience in these buildings and in the community, and also save money. And so some of the benefits directly to property owners. As Chris mentioned, these can be cash flow positive right from the beginning. So your, your energy savings are paying for your investment. The fact that they are, these improvements also improve the property value. And then this 100% financing is long-term. And so these are large, deep retrofits. One of the biggest limits to being able to do this on building is access to capital. And so this is creating a way to get capital over a long term to do these deep retrofits of buildings that really save energy and increase resilience. Next slide. And so here's just a case study to whet your appetite in Colorado. Historical building, historical commercial building replaces insulation, LED lighting to save energy, window glazing to reduce heating and cooling costs, new mechanical heating and cooling units, and PV solar. They refinanced this over a 20-year term and saved 85% of the energy, which saved them over three-quarters of a million dollar in lifetime energy savings and also increased the building's value. This is just one example. You can imagine this being applied to many different types of commercial buildings. Learning about this program, I think of the, the, a lot of repainting going on in downtown buildings. And if those small cleanup, small improvements could be turned into these deep retrofits that have a benefit for both the building owners and the community. And here I'd just like to pause and dream a little bit, brainstorm a little bit about what types of buildings, maybe what iconic buildings in the Thurston County could benefit from this program. I'll open the floor here for a few minutes.
Yeah, if the Commissioners or staff have any thoughts about buildings that this could help, let's just do a quick brainstorm, just to, just to dream of that.
Gary, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything. I'm just curious, would any of these buildings, would you, would you have to have a mortgage? Or is there a process that you could do this for a property owner that owned the building?
Yeah, I would say that it would apply to any, any building owner. I mean, even if there is no existing mortgage, there would obviously be a new loan taken out to finance the improvements. And then that would have to be repaid either by that building owner or subsequent building owners. But again, that, that debt would not show up on the owner of the building's balance sheet as it's attached to the property and not the owner's name.
And when you mentioned the cost over a period of time and energy savings, is that calculated on the existing cost of energy? Or is there an inflation issue or anything like that?
I'm not sure how that, that case study was calculated. I'm assuming that a reasonable rate of inflation of rate increases, it was incorporated into the long-term energy cost calculations. Tom, do you have any insight on that?
Well, I can just say that the, the numbers that Greg offered in terms of energy cost savings for Thurston County included in that benefit slide were calculated based on 2018 cost of energy. And so if, you know, as, depending on, you know, how the cost of energy changes going forward, if it increases somewhat, then that could slightly increase those numbers.
Okay. No, I, I'm actually trying to think of why you would not want to have this program in place.
Right. Yeah, aside from the obvious, the courthouse. Ty, do you have anything?
In terms of the question about buildings that might benefit, I'm sure any building can benefit from doing, not just an old building, but you know, we don't have that many buildings that might. I'm not aware of that many buildings that have solar, that have, you know, that have all the different things that a building could have, even if it's a relatively newer building. So I guess my question about the financing, I'm not a financing person. So trying to parse out from your presentation, what is it that's different here? It seems like it's, it seems like it's the fact that the debt can be attached to the property and not be such a burden on the individual, number one. Number two, that you're going to get a potentially longer time horizon to pay back. Are those really the things that are different from, from me just today going to a bank and asking for a loan for, to do a solar conversion?
Yeah, I mean. Definitely. I think those are the main things. And then the fact that it doesn't show up on the balance sheet of the owner, that it's, it's attached to the property allows them to, you know, keep their capital and debt capacity freed up. So, you know, I'll just throw in another example of something that relates to another conversation we're having with Commissioners about energy efficiency upgrades is multifamily apartment buildings in, in our community, which, you know, doing these energy retrofits would really benefit the residents, both in terms of lower energy bills and health improvements, while making it, you know, more financially attractive for the owners to make those investments and have other, you know, have easy financing available to do that. So, you know, it could help us in really scaling up the kind of building upgrades that we are looking at for housing.
Could a bank? One more question. Could a bank do something like this on its own because it thought it was a lucrative thing to do? Or is it, or is there a government, like, is there an obstacle that we? I know there's a model ordinance that we're supposed to, I know you're going to probably get to this, but there's like a model ordinance we have to pass. Is there some obstacle to why a bank couldn't just start a program like this on its own right now?
Well, that's, that's a great segue to our next presenter. Tom Crawford is going to talk about how CPACER works with, with the county and why it's, why the county has to take action. So Tom, turn. and why it's, why the county has to take action. So, Tom, turn it over to you.
Well, before you do that, you set us up for, you set us up for this great building revitalization. It's generate some conversation. Were there other buildings you had in mind?
I mean, I, I could imagine the, you know, some of the warehouse buildings in, in the, you know, Hawks Prairie area that are, you know, built quick and, and aren't necessarily very energy efficiency, energy efficiency in mind when they built, although of course they may have to meet the energy code. If they, if they choose, they can do more upgrades to those buildings, maybe some of the older ones that would allow us to, you know, reduce some of our biggest greenhouse gas emission sources in the county. So looking at, at our overall greenhouse emissions from buildings, a lot of the worst polluters are the larger buildings and the older buildings. So, you know, we can do an inventory of buildings, stock and, and really begin to identify the low hanging fruit for reducing carbon emissions.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
Yeah.
No, go ahead.
Tom?
Okay. Thank you very much. My name is Tom Crawford. I'm a president, board chair of Thurston Climate Action Team. And to address Commissioner Mensah's question, it's my understanding that this is, this legislation is the thing that specifically provides a structure and a, and a, and a procedure and a format to encourage financial institutions to do this kind of thing. I'm not a legislative or legal expert to be able to tell you for sure that there's, that that would be impossible, you know, prior to this for, for financial institutions to do this. Although I think there would be, there could be some legal difficulties how you.
I think the specific thing. Go ahead. Specific thing, Tom, is, is that the county assessor is the only entity that can place an assessment on a property. Building owners, I mean, a financial institution could, could give a loan for energy improvements for sure, but they could not attach that loan to the property. It would always have to be attached to the building owner. And, and then of course the owner would have to pay that off before they could sell the building. So this, this specific innovation here is, is being able to have the county involved to, to, to record the assessment on the property, which counties are the only entities that can do that.
Thank you, Chris. So with the passage of this legislation, as Chris so well outlined, now it is up to the counties. And fortunately, even though the, the funding for implementation of this program was, was removed by the governor, Shift Zero, a Washington statewide alliance that Chris mentioned earlier, has worked with, with council and national experts to create some model documents. So to make it easy for the counties to go ahead and move forward with this. And I'll get into some of the details of what some of those model documents contain. I think we've also included them in your packet for our briefing this morning. And the other advantage to, to having a, a, a set of model documents that, that counties can, can go ahead and modify and, you know, customize to their own purposes, but basically, you know, provide a common framework. This, this makes it easy for building owners and professionals and building managers to, to, that work across the state, across county lines, to, to enter into this program, knowing they have a consistency and predictability as to how it's going to work from county to county, which, which is an advantage to, to a county like Thurston County, because it gives us confidence that we can work not, not, not only with the local developers, but also with the developers who work statewide to get some of these improvements done. Go ahead, Chris. And so the step, here is, here is a set of recommended steps for implementing this program. First of all, you, you'll definitely want to meet together, take a look at and review carefully the model documents and have your, you know, county's legal counsel review them. You want to identify a program administrator who will manage this in, in terms of just administering the checklist process as people apply. And we'll get into that in, in a, in a couple of minutes. You want to develop and propose a, an ordinance that, you know, will establish this program for the county. You want to have obviously some public comment period for, for that ordinance and that proposal. And then hopefully with, you know, with the public comment under consideration, hopefully it will be favorable. Then you can go ahead and adopt that county ordinance. And note here that, you know, this doesn't, will not require very much work on the part of county staff at all. Most of the work is with the building owner and with the capital provider to, to put these deals together. And, and, and as Chris pointed out, the capital provider, you know, whether it's a local bank or a credit union or whatever financial institution is involved, they will be the ones who will actually be collecting the money. So there will be no flow of money through the county to manage or, or any of that sort of thing. Chris, go ahead. Next slide. So here are some of the documents that are in your packet that we provided you. There's a model county ordinance, first of all, as, as we indicated. There's also a program guidebook that describes how it works, how this program works. You know, what improvements are qualified to, to take advantage of this program. You know, what the, you know, describes the application review process, what capital providers are qualified and, you know, how you, how the, the building owner will, you know, what, what kind of providers, capital providers they can seek out. And if there is another lender already involved with the building, then those consent requirements for that other lender, whether it be a mortgage lender or some other kind of lender. There's also template closing documents for, you know, that give you standard forms for, for establishing the transaction and for placing the assessment on the property. And then finally, there's a checklist that the program administrator can use to easily check that, you know, all the steps in the process have been followed, the forms have been completed and so forth. Next. So again, the process is that the owner and the provider prepare an application. The county administrator has 10 business days to review. The council drafts closing documents. And here again, we have templates for you that you can simply, you know, customize with Thurston County specific information on and go ahead and adopt and start using. And that includes agreement about the assessment, notice of the interest and a CPACER lien, assignment of the notice of assessment and the assessment agreement. And then the county records assessment agreement and other closing documents. And then the, the county, go ahead, records those things. And, and then the capital provider, once the county has notified them of recording of the assessment, the county provider, or the capital provider, I'm sorry, then can go ahead and disperse the funds consistent with the financing agreement. Chris? Additional resources, you can find additional resources potentially on the Shift Zero website, including, well, we've provided those model program documents for you. There's also an overview flyer. There's a frequently asked questions document. And there's links to national CPACES resources. And then Shift Zero actually did a similar webinar or similar briefing. And you can go ahead and listen to that as well if, if you like. So, and then finally, if you would like a walkthrough, we're not going to provide that today of the, of the model documents. We suggest contacting Shift Zero folks directly through this email address. So.
One of the people, oh, just let me mention, one of the, one of the people who, who helped to get the legislative path and, and, and work, create this bill that through is a gentleman named Court Olson. He's been, he's a building commissioner, commissioning consultant, and he's done work here in Olympia, including Olympia City Hall and the Public Utilities District's building, a number of other buildings. So he's familiar with our community. And he lives in Bellevue, but he is available to, to help with, help counties develop these programs if, if they so desire. And through, through contacting PACE, through contacting Shift Zero.
Any other resources that you all would be looking for that we haven't talked about?
Hey, Tom, this is Romero. You're referring that you have provided model documents, the model ordinance and templates. Do you submit that to, when do you send those?
I sent that to Amy yesterday.
I'm sorry, you guys are talking to each other. I couldn't hear the answer.
Yeah, there's a question to Tom.
Yeah, Chris sent those documents to, I guess you sent those to Amy yesterday, Chris?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so as long as we receive those, that will be helpful because we don't have those on, on the document today.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay. That's as, as long as we got in the office, that's good.
I kind of assumed that Jenica had already, had already had access, had access to those documents because it was sent out, everyone who sent, who watched the previous webinar, she had attended that. And so I, I found out that you didn't receive them. So I'm, I'm sending, I did send them yesterday to, to Amy, Amy Davis, but didn't get out to you.
That, that's perfect. Thank you.
We have 20 minutes, plenty of time for discussion. And before I get to commissioners, I want to ask either Josh or Brett, if you have any questions or comments from your perspective.
I think that the program seems pretty straightforward. I would be interested to know if TCAT or any of this group has had any conversations with the assessor at this point?
Yes, I had a conversation with the assessor.
The treasurer.
The treasurer, I'm sorry. I had a conversation with the treasurer. My, my apologies. Mr. Gadman, who has expressed in the process of legislative adoption of, of this, this program, on behalf of the Treasurers Association, had expressed some concerns. And we have responses to his principal's concerns too, and we'd be happy to discuss those with you. Have not, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I, we have not had a conversation with the assessor.
Anything more, Josh? Brett, any questions or comments? Okay, now I'm going to go back to the commissioners and I'll reverse the order, start with the commissioner answerer.
When you talk about the county action and you mentioned the assessor and filing this assessment, I mean, when, when somebody has a lien, they file that with the auditor, right? Record it, record that on the property. Is this something different than that? Than just anyone who files a, if I get a judgment as an attorney and someone didn't pay me, I just file with the auditor? And that's auditor's job. Is there something extra that the county is being asked to do in this case that involves the assessor or? And I'm not.
I think it's the, it's the assessment agreement. So I mean, in the cases that you mentioned where someone filing a lien gets a judgment, it's sort of an adversarial situation. But what we're talking about here is a mutual agreement among the parties to place an assessment, a lien that would, that would then stay with the property until it was paid off.
It doesn't, I, I'm just, I guess I'm trying to ferret out whether or not this is some substantial burden to the county versus just what the county staff does all the time for, as a matter of business. Doesn't sound like it's anything new.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's our understanding. It's, it's just part of the regular business that the assessor does all the time.
I guess I would, you know, if Jenica at some point wants to, and she sat through the webinar with county, county glasses on, I'd, you know, like to check in with her, but to me, I agree with Commissioner Edwards. I don't see the reason that we wouldn't do this. And I, I wouldn't want to lose to Waukesha County. So I'd say we just get going and put the pieces in place. It sounds like a no-brainer. When something passes the Senate ninety-four to, ninety-four to three, or whatever he said, that shows that it has extremely broad support across the political and spectrum and the economic spectrum and the, you know, the building community where it had concerns or the financial community, you wouldn't get that kind of a vote in the Senate. So it tells me it's pretty clear, win-win for everybody.
Yeah, I was also really pleased that they included buildings as small as five units in multifamily. So, you know, the residential pace is, is more controversial because residential lenders are not very keen on allowing anyone else to have a, you know, a superior, a lien that's superior to theirs. But in the commercial realm, that's much more common and it wasn't controversial. So, so, but they were able to, you know, kind of push this down to the smallest multifamily building size of, you know, above a fourplex. That's, that's good. Again, kind of tying into our desire to retrofit existing housing and, and improving carbon emissions from those.
That's another wrinkle is they get priority, their, their lien priority to a senior mortgage holder, for example.
Tom, there may be a little bit of a comment that you could make regarding the priority of the liens from the Gadman.
Yes.
This one is, yeah.
Yeah, that was one of Mr. Gadman's concerns was that there wouldn't be a lot of uptake because the, the existing lenders, you know, with existing, you know, loans and claims on the, on the property, you know, would effectively be, be pushed into second position on the, on the, you know, with their loans. And the experience so far nationwide is that lenders will look primarily at the financial position of the, of the applicant and, and, you know, the, the cash flow of building and more the underlying finances of the situation than anything else. And as we've said, there have been more than, more than 2,500 successful loans nationwide. I think a couple of hundred financial institutions are already participating in this, in this kind of program. So experience basically tells a different story. And I think the other reason for that, that different story is the, the, the additional value, actual additional value created in the building, the cost savings and other, some of the other financial advantages that building owners are realizing through using this program.
Yeah, I think those, those advantages really make it more track, make it less concerning to those other lien holders because they realize it's going to improve the overall financial performance of the building and reduce the potential of any kind of foreclosure, which again, in experience, there have been no foreclosures on these loans nationwide to date that we're aware of.
Process wise, though, the, the senior, the senior lien holder has to sign off on the agreement?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I got you.
Hey, Commissioner Edwards, any questions or comments?
Uh, yes, I'm just wondering, does this increase the value of the property? And then the owner has to pay more property tax, for an example?
Definitely, we've seen the, the increase in value. I, I assume that that would show up in the, in the assessed, you know, the assessor's assessed value at some point in the future. So I would imagine that that would be an increase in property taxes, yes. But obviously, part of the advantage is that, that those, you know, energy savings are much more than the costs involved. So we do have a, you know, a couple of other, oh, actually, none of the other examples are, are good for, but the one that we showed you before, that case study, I'll share my screen one more time. You know, it identified that there was an increase in value of $600,000 of this, of this building. And that's just one example, and we could, we could find out more information about that if you're curious and would like us to, to find out the effects of the property tax increase and how that relates to the rest of the.
I may interrupt you, Gary, because I don't know the difference between the property value as assessed by the assessor versus the market value with appraisal coming in higher than previously.
I guess the other.
I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that myself, but what I was wondering about, first of all, this is a hundred percent voluntary, it sounds like. So the property owner can make that decision if this. if, uh, this increase in value maybe is more beneficial than detrimental, for an example. And one of the other things I was wondering about, I didn't hear anybody say, but it takes the county taking this action for, uh, individuals of, that own, uh, property in municipal jurisdictions to participate as well. The, the individual municipal, uh, jurisdiction either can't do this or not, I don't know. I mean, does it take the county to do it to benefit the whole county? Is that what I'm hearing?
It takes the county assessor to do it, to do it in order to, you know.
Well, so I was wondering about with, the county, the county needs to have this ordinance in place, then people that own property, say in Olympia or Lacey or something, can take advantage of this, is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay, so, one final question, going back to my original question of why not, is there any detrimental issue that comes up to the county taxpayers or the county employees that would weigh in on this? Whether it be that much more additional work? Is there a threat of, uh, potential litigation or anything like that? Are you aware of anything that would be detrimental? And why we, I just don't understand how come we wouldn't want to do it? I'm sure we'll get asked.
No, I think that is one of the main advantages that make this attractive nationwide is the fact that it really puts all the work on the capital provider and the building owner. They have to prepare all the documents and, and submit an application. All the county has to do is to process that application and record the lien, um, which are, which are kind of small activity, small tasks that your, your county assessor's office does every day. So, it's, it's sort of fits right in with the existing workflow and doesn't really impact or create any need, need for new, uh, new work activities or, uh, programs, other than, other than just being able to.
May I?
Go through that checklist.
Commissioner?
Yeah. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, basically what I'm hearing, um, with all the respect, I disagree.
Okay.
Because, uh, the word I'm, I'm looking at, when, started looking at the structure and the process in which we need to implement this, I think we need to make sure that we have the process in place. Who is going to pay for the recording fees? How we, uh, what is going to be the, the county employee who's going to review the applications? Making sure all the legal documents are in place, which require a prosecuting attorney's review. So, I, I, I don't want to walk away from this meeting with the commissioners understanding that it's really part of the normal county business, which it's not. Um, I, I do, I agree with the board, you know, and, I mean, the, the program is, is a great program. But I think we need to build the structure to make sure the commissioners have a clear understanding, what are the mechanics associated with implementing this program? Because it's not just about the commissioners passing an ordinance establishing the program, because as you stated, the county is a nexus. And the nexus is putting a lien on the property. But before we get to the, get into that, implementing the lien on the property, which the assessor needs to do it, we need to make sure all the documents are in place and all the documents are legally, uh, correct. So, I'm just going to make sure, uh, before we get too much into, you know, really, it's just part of the normal county business, perhaps it isn't.
I stand corrected.
Okay, were you done, uh, were you done, Gary?
Yeah, I, those are basically my concerns. And I'm, I'm looking for the counter to the pluses, I guess. And I think the county manager is bringing that up. So, that's well worth, uh, discussing. Sure, I'm done.
We've got six minutes, and I've got a couple of questions myself. Going back, you don't have to go back to the slide, but on page, uh, on slide five, it was what is CPAC and what is CPAC or? Uh, it states that since 2005, CPAC has financed 2,000 plus projects. Is that just statewide or is that nationally?
Nationally, and I, uh, I actually heard yesterday that that number is now up to 2,500. So, I didn't change that in the, in the version I sent you, but, uh, yeah.
My goodness, and it says over $1 billion of investment. Is there any way to calculate what the amount of savings or what the, uh, the return of that investment is?
I don't know if that, if that information exists. I mean, I think it exists for individual properties, uh, like the case study that I showed you. And then we have some other case studies that could, uh, that I could pull up if you would like or send along. But, uh, but in terms of the overall, like nationwide, what the overall, uh, performance of the program, I think that, that information may exist, but I don't have it handy.
Okay, thank you, that's fine. And then on, on slide nine, the benefits of CPAC are for jobs. I'm wondering what, if, if we were able to quantify the number of local jobs that would bring it to county? What, uh, what type of jobs, how many, the wages, level of wages, is it entry level? Is there any way, uh, is there any documentation showing the quantification of employment?
Tom, you want to take that?
Yeah, I, I would say that, go ahead. Uh, I would.
I just want, one other question you, you, you generated from my perspective is, uh, what does the Economic Development Council say about this whole thing? Kind of following along with what you're bringing up, touch.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, gentlemen. Tom or Chris or Greg?
Um, I'll go ahead and take a, a shot at the jobs question.
Okay.
Nationwide, uh, clean energy jobs, and these would be clean energy jobs like, uh, you know, the retrofit of, of, uh, installing insulation, installing new lighting, uh, maybe doing some minor modifications or maybe some more significant modifications to the building to improve how it works. Uh, those are, uh, uh, investment in, in, in that kind of work produces, on the average, more jobs, uh, than the average jobs produced by any other, any other investment, uh, in, in, across multiple sectors. Uh, and then it's dramatically more, uh, the difference is dramatically, uh, greater between fossil fuel jobs and clean energy jobs, as, 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 uh, demonstrated in the slide that Greg provided.
Well, that's nice to hear, but then tell me the numbers or what that, what that means, uh, greater than.
For Thurston, for Thurston County, we, you know, we, we have some examples in, in, in the, in, um, the, uh, work that, uh, the EDC did a few years ago on the Thurston Energy Program. It did create, uh, some jobs, uh, and, and we could go back to those numbers and, and, and tell you how many jobs that particular program created. But that was a much different program than what we're talking about here.
Yeah, I would say, you know, just that, you know, we're talking about high skill, high wage jobs of, of energy efficiency professionals, um, you know, you know, contracting companies that in some cases are, you know, have organized labor and use prevailing wage. And, and, you know, there are also jobs that, that can't be done from China or India. There are jobs that are, uh, you know, kind of in, insulated from being exported. I mean, maybe not all of them will be jobs for Thurston County residents, but certainly, uh, Washington and the Pacific Northwest will, will benefit overall. So, I'd say, you know, there is a kind of a insulation against leaky bucket syndrome there in terms of, uh, you know, jobs moving overseas or, or outside of our community.
Okay. Hey, Gary Edwards, Commissioner Edwards, thank you very much for bringing up the EDC. It'd be kind of cool to hear them weigh in on this. Romero, we have just a moment left, want to wrap this up?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Based on what I'm hearing and, and, and based on the comments that I heard from the commissioners, I will look at the ordinance, uh, the document they have, the documents that have been provided, um, and start developing some steps, uh, framing an structure, finding out, or at least having an attempt to define what the impact will be to the county itself. Um, making sure the assessor is part of this conversation, because that's the key, that's the nexus. And then, um, I will work with Jenica to, uh, uh, build a future briefing to the board in terms of what the options the board will have. Just make sure, obviously, the program is, is worthwhile implemented, just making sure that we have all the necessary steps for you to understand what those are. And at the same time, I will engage Jenica to start reaching out to the EDC and start, uh, bringing them along in this, uh, potential program.
Yeah, there are a number of other individuals who could be valuable, uh, assets to the conversation. Um, and we actually asked Jenica if we thought, if she thought we should invite them to this briefing. And she said this is such an initial briefing that that would be more appropriate at a later, uh, a later briefing.
Yeah, she, she did mention to me that, um, that you wanted to invite some of the potential lenders. And, uh, I suggested that will be way too premature, since this is an initial briefing to the board. Uh, so, um, yeah, we're tracking.
Well, what a appetite. Thank you all very much, and this meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you very much.